...brought by Elijah Omweno, Robert Isaac, and Steven Momani. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to the council about this taxicab license? I'll ask two more times. Are there any individuals here who would like to speak to the council in regard to the application for taxi cab service license? Sir, step to the podium, please, and give us your name.
My name is Elijah Omweno. I live in Minamoni. It's about 3:5 minutes away from here. And I would like to start a business here, taxi business, and of which I think I've met my application. I came here last month, and we were told to be here today for public hearing. And if there's anybody who has a question, you are free to ask me.
Yes, sir. I'll ask a couple more times for anyone to come forward and make comments or ask questions. And if no one comes forward, we'll close the hearing. That'll be the end of the public's right to comment on your application. And then later on this evening, the council will consider it, discuss it, and vote on your application. So, thank you. Is there anyone else present who'd like to comment? Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Doug Luxinger from 1013 River Crest Road in Lakeland. Listen, I own Hudson Taxi and FDS Enterprises, A-Taxi. We've been servicing the Hudson area for 18 and a half years, almost 19 years, actually. July will be 19 years. I guess I don't think that we have room for any more cabs. Some of my cabs sit around most of the time empty. The only time I'm really busy is like Friday and Saturday nights, a bar close. Other than that, you know, I just don't feel that... You know, we average about 20 calls a day on average throughout the month. I guess that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the application for taxi cab service Anyone else like to comment on the application for taxi cab service license?
Move to close the hearing.
We'll close the hearing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion passes, and the hearing is closed. With that, we are ready to call to order our regular common council meeting for today, June 2nd, 2008. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'll stand and join.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Knudsen.
Here.
District One, Morsette.
Here.
District Two, Brokaw.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Wyland.
Here.
District Five, O'Malley.
Here.
District Six, Virchell.
Here.
Thank you. Next, we have the administration of the oath of office to a new police officer, and for that, I'll call up Chief Jensen. And I believe he's got Judge Garrity here to administer the oath. So, we'll turn the floor over to the two of them.
Mr. Mayor and common councilors, Jeremy Johnson, our new patrol officer.
Aye.
Would you raise your hand, please, and repeat after me? I, Jeremy H. Johnson.
I, Jeremy H. Johnson.
Having been appointed as police officer.
Having been appointed as police officer.
For the city of Hudson, Wisconsin.
For the city of Hudson, Wisconsin.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the state of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of said office.
Discharge the duties of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Jeremy has been a casual call officer with us for the last two years, so he started officially his duties last Monday, so this is his first full week. Congratulations, Jeremy.
Thank you.
All right.
Congratulations. Okay, next, I've got some Girl Scouts here who won the highest award in...I think it's the highest award in Girl Scouting, right? The Gold Award. And are there five of you here?
Four here.
Four here. Okay, so we've got Jennifer Gratz, Kelsey Brathel. Who isn't here?
Chelsea Walzak.
Chelsea. Okay. Chelsea Walzak isn't here. Michaela Fawn, Annie Hager, right?
Yep.
All of you. So, we just wanted to bring you here and recognize your achievement, know how much work it is. And let's see, now, was it the four of you that worked on the project altogether? Three. You three worked on the project at EP Rock?
Yep, with Chelsea.
Okay, with Chelsea. And that was improving the flag, and you created a monument for veterans. And then what was your project?
I rejuvenated St. Croix Valley Life Care Center in Stillwater, Minnesota.
Okay, great. Well, congratulations, and so you get a chance to be on TV. And congratulations to your parents and family that are here. Good luck. Do you get enough pictures?
Thanks.
And then we have a very successful Destination Imagination team who went to the world competition and once again won an award, so we've got a number of them. Here they are with all their hardware. And so, this is David Schoberg, Adam Sellen...Salan, is it? How do you say it? Salan. Sidney Milanofi, Josh Koch-Fogarty, Emily Kapilas, and Ashley Aninson. Now, these guys, practically every year they've competed, have won high honors. And so, they're really an outstanding group. Look at all their hardware. And I think sometimes we recognize the athletic prowess, our champions in various events in athletics, and so we'd like to recognize your creative abilities and acting abilities. I've seen your performances, and it was really something. And not just your performance, but all the work you did putting...creating your own props and so on. And to do this all on your own is really something special, so we wanted to recognize your achievements, too.
Thank you.
Congratulations. So, you're going on to college next year, so tell us where you're going and what you're doing next year.
I'm going to Evergreen State College in Washington...or Olympia, Washington.
I'm going to the College of St. Catherine in St. Paul, Minnesota.
Evergreen State College in Olympia, Washington.
I'll be going to University of Milwaukee.
Madison.
Columbia College for film.
All right, good. Well, thanks a lot. Okay, at this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. Is there anyone here would like to address the council on any item that is not listed on our agenda? Anyone here that would like to address the council with comments or suggestions tonight? All right. Next, we will move on to the consent agenda. Would you read the consent agenda items for us?
To approve the public hearing and regular meeting minutes of June 19th, 2008, to approve claims for payment in the amount of $367,342.35, a detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request. To place on file the 2008 Room Tax Budget Report as submitted. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B Retailer's License to the Hudson Booster Club to sell beer and wine July 3rd to July 5th, 2008, at the annual Booster Days Event in Lakefront Park. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B Retailer's License to the Hudson Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau to sell beer and wine October 15th through 18th, 2008, at the Spirit of the St. Croix Days Event in Lakefront Park. To approve the renewal and issuance of the Taxi Cab Service License to FDS Enterprises doing business as A-Taxi, Hudson Taxi, and Taxi Cab Drivers Licenses to Douglas Luxinger, Timothy Whitzel, Robert Francis, Ronald Nelson, Jeffrey Barnison, Martin Wethuski, and Brian Lovejoy. To approve direct seller permits to the following groups registered to sell during Hudson Booster Days. Hudson Boosters, Hudson United Methodist Church, Earl's Rides, Boy Scout Troop 148, and Glowsticks LLC. To approve the updated building maintenance worker job description as submitted. To approve increasing the hourly rate for the head lifeguard position to 50 cents per hour higher than the rate for lifeguards in the current pay scale. To approve the issuance of a special event permit for the Spirit of the St. Croix Days Event to be held October 5th through 15th through 18th, 2008, in Lakefront Park contingent on receipt of the required certificate of insurance and the provision of six additional off-street disability parking stalls on the west side of Lakefront Park Bath House Parking Lot. To place on file the reports of the wastewater director and the community access board minutes of May 27th, 2008. That is all.
What's your pleasure on the consent agenda?
Move for approval.
We have a motion for approval.
Second.
And we have a second. Did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Under...I printed out the agenda from the internet, and it mentioned about unfinished business for the change to the zoning code. Did I miss that?
Well, that...
That's later in the agenda.
We'll take that up as a regular item. These consent agenda items will receive no further discussion, and they're considered routine enough that we won't discuss them in depth. They've been through staff review, in most cases, committee review. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call vote.
Morsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Wyland?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Brokaw?
Consent agenda is passed. The next item on our agenda is applications for operators licenses.
Mr. Mayor, recuse myself.
Please remark Mr. Morsette as recused. Recommendation from Finance Committee was to approve the operators licenses. You have an issue sheet in your packet. There's three individuals, Evelyn Dawson, Rose Minky, and Teresa Peterson, that are getting their operators license from June of '08 to June 2010. We've got a temporary for Booster Days for Gregory Maurer, and we've got a temporary for Spirit of the St. Croix Event for Kimberly Heineman and Pat Shirley.
Move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second for approval. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind the Hudson Booster Days staff, who've done a great job in the past to keep the volume level down after 10:30.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is determined funding source for the flag system on Second Street at Myrtle Street. The council approved installation of a crosswalk flag system to cost about $600. Finance considered this and suggests that it come out of our 2008 contingency budget. What's your pleasure?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion by Morsette. Second by O'Malley. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item is review proposed updates to the city procurement policy. We discussed this in...in staff at the department head meeting last week. We have taken comments and suggestions from staff and department head members. The idea here is to, to the greatest extent possible, encourage competition in bidding for our expenditures of money, whether it be for items or whether it be for services. But at the same time, create a policy that's flexible enough and easy enough to administer that it's not taking more staff time than it's worth. The Finance Committee recommended approval. I recommend approval. What's your pleasure here?
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Pam seconds motion. Any further discussion or questions on the policy?
One minor correction that was brought up at Finance on Section C-3. There's a word missing. It should be "has a financial or other interest in the firm," so that will be noted.
Anyone else have questions about this? This is an internal policy that we could change again anytime we want to, but I think it's a good idea. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Policy will be adopted, effected immediately. The next item is number 12, and at Finance, we took up number 12 and number 16 somewhat together. Am I right? Number 12 is next on the agenda? I think I am. Number 12 deals with our bids for our annual sidewalk curb and gutter program. Annually, we've had the past practice of bonding for $75,000 for curb and gutter repairs and sidewalk repairs, and then also bonding for $160,000 for a smaller mill and overlay project. This year, we got bids in for the sidewalk curb and gutter program that are before you on issue sheet for number 12. We also just today, which...so that issue sheet, for some of you, you'll find on the table, I think, we got in bids on number 16, which had to do with mill and overlay projects, primarily it's 11th Street. But what's been happening here, you recall at the last council meeting, our engineer's estimate for the cost of doing the major mill and overlay project on Crestview Drive, the engineer's estimate was that we should prepare ourselves for it potentially coming in much higher than what we had previously estimated due to fuel costs, primarily the cost of the oil that's going into the asphalt. Because of that, we've tried to come up with a plan that will let us maintain some flexibility to prioritize among these projects. And we could delay to...potentially delay even to next year, part or all of this project, trimming down either delaying the 11th Street Mill and Overlay, or trimming down the size of the Crestview project. But to do that, we need to be able to wait on approval on these bids until we can get in the bids on the Crestview project. So, the recommendation from the Finance Committee on this was to delay approval of the bids for the 2008 sidewalk curb and gutter program, as well as delaying the bids that we received today on the smaller mill and overlay project, which was item number 16, and to delay until July 7th. And then to authorize a committee consisting of Tom Zooli, Betty...you're not Betty anymore. Betty was sitting there. Myself, and Scott O'Malley, the Chair of the Public Works Committee, that we would have the authority to authorize the bids to be...the bids and specs to be advertised out to bids. And the reason for that is our previous schedule was that we would approve them as a council on our June 16th meeting. But if we do that, then we will have missed that June 16th morning advertising deadline. If you'll let us authorize the plans and specs, we will delay consideration by the council of all three of these projects until July 7th, and get in those bids on Crestview. And that'll let us look at it all and award whatever parts of it that we decide to do. Now, one further comment would be that the bids we received today for mill and overlay were pretty...what should I say? They were competitive, and we were pleased with where they came in. If that would be a pattern, we may not have as much of a surprise up on Crestview coming as we think. It's a bit of a balancing between the cost of oil driving, the cost of mill and overlay up on the one hand, and aggressive hungry contractors who are looking for work on the other hand, competing aggressively to get this business. So, that was the motion from Finance. I hope that's clear enough. Scott, do you have any questions in particular about that process?
I just want to note that we...and verify, we normally have a 45-day window here. Is that correct for both of these bids as well?
We're within that much.
Now, we're within the 45 days, so I can with no problem recommend...I will move that we accept the procedure that you've just outlined.
We have a motion.
A second.
And a second. Any other questions on that or comments, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. I think then that takes care of both item 12 and 16. Our next item is number 14. Update on discussions with representatives from joint library municipalities requiring...regarding acquiring a building for library purposes, including authorization of $2,500 for legal fees associated with drafting an amendment to the joint library agreement to allow the possible purchase of a building. The recommendation from the Finance Committee was for approval of this item. Let me give you an update on where this comes from. We have now held meetings with the representatives of our four partners in the joint library. That means it's been the town chairs of the Town of Hudson and the Town of St. Joseph, and the village president of the Village of North Hudson, and myself as mayor of the city of Hudson. Those four municipalities constitute the members, if you will, of the joint library. And we have met to discuss what kind of decisions need to be made, what kind of agreements need to be made for us to be able to decide, can...is this feasible? Can we go forward with it? How would we go forward with it? And we've come to a point of agreeing amongst ourselves that it will be critical to work out the issues of ownership, the ownership structure, the maintenance and operations, the question of duration of the agreement, which right now lets all...any member out in one year. They can give one-year notice by December 31st, and they can be free of the agreement, leaving the others to operate the library. There are a number of those items. And we decided that it was time that we start on that, and the question became, how should we best do that? Suggestion was made that we should work with an attorney that is separate from the city attorney in our case, or, you know, the legal representation of any of those four entities. And so, our suggestion is that we're going to hire Jeff Redman, who's a local attorney. He has on his resume experience...pretty extensive experience in working with setting up organizational structures for nonprofit organizations, including time on the national...serving as legal counsel for the National Girl Scouts, and many other community organizations directly in our area. He's also got elected experience as a member of a Wisconsin Town Board, as well as a Wisconsin School Board. And he also has experience as a municipal attorney representing the city of White Bear Lake as their city attorney. So, it felt like he has the right mix of private business experience, putting together different groups of people, as well as a good founding in the laws that are involved. We're really going down a path that hasn't probably been ever traveled before, so it's going to take a certain amount of working out in advance, for example, as I mentioned, who will pay? Where will the borrowing or bonding come from? Some pretty significant questions have to be worked out. And so, he offered to do this, donating part of his time as a pro bono, and to do it as a flat fee of $10,000. The four municipalities then discussed that and decided the fairest way would be to split that equally. And so, each of us are coming to our respective boards, asking for authorization to spend $2,500 for sort of aid. That 25% borne by each would come to a total of 25...or pardon me, $10,000. And then that to be a flat fee to negotiate and draft this agreement. In its final form, I believe it will be, if it happens, it would be a capital agreement addendum to the joint library agreement, which right now, our joint library agreement prohibits these entities from jointly buying, or operating, or developing a library building together unless or until they negotiate together a separate capital agreement. So, that's what this is all about. Now, that being said, I guess, let's do it this way. The Finance Committee has made a recommendation for approval of this. Do we have a motion?
I'll move for approval of authorization of $2,500 for our share of the legal piece.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there questions, comments, concerns about this? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification. You had mentioned in Finance that this agreement that will be drafted is independent of any specific facility, that it could be applied to any number of potential sites. Is that correct?
That is correct in that I have tried to keep our discussions, and I haven't really been appointed leader of it, although I called the first meetings. But for my own part, I have tried to keep it more generic so that we aren't tied into one particular building at this point. These steps would have to be negotiated, were we to decide to purchase a different building, to build a building, to buy land to build a building, or to change the ownership structure right now of our current building, which, you know, right now is owned as a sole owner by the city of Hudson and the joint library is a tenant there. And they pay $60,000 a year.
That's right.
As a...as rent, towards rent, maintenance fees, janitorial utilities, all those expenses. If we were to decide to do it any other way than that, we have to have this discussion about a separate capital agreement.
And I mention that not out of, you know, disdain for the NMC building, but just that I would hope this agreement would be sturdy enough to hold up should anything happen with the NMC building, that that wouldn't become the new library, and that we wouldn't have to go through this again.
Well, can I make a comment?
Yes.
I think the discussion regarding ownership, operation, and so forth needs...will happen in the context of this agreement, but I think the agreement itself, at least right now, is with NMC in mind. I don't know that it's going to be a totally generic agreement that can just be attached to the existing joint library agreement, because any terms regarding ownership, operation, contributions of each municipality... contributions of each municipality may differ depending on, for example, where the building is or just what the specific project is. So they may be able to decide kind of generally, well, this is the ownership structure, structure in general that we want, but specific terms, I think, would be driven by whatever the particular project is or proposal is at the time. If you're envisioning a, a kind of a generic capital agreement, I mean, I don't see that happening possibly, but it seems like it's going to have to have terms specific to what's on the table. Maybe, maybe not. I mean, that will be something, if that's something that the council wants, that's something that, that attorney would need to try to facilitate. I think it might be difficult, though.
My understanding was the same as Laurie's, that we'd be looking at an agreement that said, based on the four parties, what percentage ownership, what percentage operational support could be independent of a specific building.
I will do my best in that regard, but you understand this is a four-way partnership. It, we don't have any veto power, other than whatever agreement comes out of this, we'll have to go back to four respected elective bodies and it has to pass all four of them. The, the negotiations will happen in open meetings. I mean, right now, we have taken the approach of there is no competitive negotiation going on that warrants closed session on this. That might be a gray area, but that's the interpretation that I'm the most comfortable with. And so the negotiation, you know, it might be a little bit like watching sausage being made, but, I mean, anybody that wanted to watch it could, could watch it. And I, I suspect this, that if you want to give me direction as a council of things that are criteria, that are, for example, negotiating guidelines, that's your prerogative. In Finance Committee, the question was brought up, where do we stand on the fundraising feasibility study? And the answer is, the foundation is doing, the Library Foundation is doing significant work on this project independently. They're not reporting to our ad hoc committee of representatives. They're spending their own money on that. I guess maybe that's a little debatable, but they're spending a separate source of money that has not come and been approved from, by you, such as this is. This is the first money that is up to you to say yes or no. I want public dollars spent to investigate this.
I think the only reason it came up is just to make sure that if something were to happen with, with the idea of the NMC building, this isn't scrapped. But I think we're just looking, making sure that money was, was used that way.
I guess, one of my-
I think that was the only point, right Laurie?
Yeah. Any other?
We'd like to remind all members of the council and members of the public that one week from tonight at exactly this time, we will be in session with the library board, of the joint library board at the municipal building, it's open to the public. The Library Foundation, as you mentioned, has been acting independently, but they have been very good coming to these public meetings and reporting on their progress. And I would imagine that we would have such a report again, one week from tonight.
Correct. Any other questions, comments? Randy, any concerns?
No, I'm okay with the way recommended out of Finance.
Pam?
I would put it to you this way, and I said this to the Finance Committee. There are a lot of ways that this exploration of the NMC building purchase, there are many ways in which that could die completely this summer. We don't know, we just, there are a lot of things that need to be discussed among these partner organizations. And so what this is about is starting the discussions, but rather than just discussing, we are going to start, provided that everyone approves this approach, we are going to start to actually put some things down on paper and negotiate item by item, who will pay for operations? And how long will you be committed? Because right now, our partners can, can opt out with one year's notice. They can, in any year, in December, they can give notice and say, we're done with you, we'll be in for one more year and then you're on your own.
I think it may have been changed to two.
Well, the original agreement had it two, but the partners got together and amended it back to one.
It was changed from two to one at the request of one of the other partners.
Right. And so that's one of the first things, is to say, look, if somebody's going to borrow money on long-term bonds here, we pretty well need to know how long you're in for. And so there's some, some things to be negotiated.
Well, I would say too, that just periodic updates, or if there's an issue that's, these representatives are having differences or struggling with, certainly it could come to council so that you're not presented with a, okay, this is the agreement and, I mean, feedback from council is going to be important through the whole process.
Mr. Mayor, my biggest concern is the operating budget and how we're going to fund that, if, if everything else gets tied together. So, you know, I guess you can keep that in mind as you're doing your negotiation about how would we fund this particular project? If it, if it came to fruition.
I think there are a couple of things that were included in the non-binding referendum that are potentially of interest. One is the fact that it, the language included the concept that there would be 50% of the cost would be through private donations. And the question is whether that actually gets written into the agreement right now and what kind of teeth would that have? In other words, what happens if it doesn't? And are there deadlines when certain benchmarks or thresholds have to be reached in that regard? Another specifically in regard to the operating budget has to do with, how is it divided up? I mean, right now, we've got, I think last year it was 18.5 cents per thousand, I don't remember. But the referendum talked about, at least our referendum, used 24 cents additional so that we'd go from 18 to 42 or something like that. Now, you know, we don't know those operational numbers.
Right. Because I don't believe we had a chance to do anything with those numbers. In other words, they weren't internally prepared by someone from our finance department. That was, they were brought to us by the Library Foundation.
Let, let me talk about that a little bit with you so that I can update you on some of the discussion that's been had. Library boards in Wisconsin are independent entities. Our only control over library boards is to make appointments. I mean, you, you will vote on appointments to the library board and then you vote on the allocation of money to them each year in appropriation. But once that money's given to a library board, it's under the exclusive control of the library board. Right now, money for building expenses doesn't fall in that category, because we do it all as a city, so you control every expense. Right now, the roof is leaking there, has been leaking for a while. And we've chosen not to spend the money to repair it as of this day. Who made that decision? You know, I guess I have now, previous mayor did, the council did. We've got it planned for when we're going to do that. One way to do this would be you'd just turn the money over every year to the library board and they would run a building all on their own. So when the roof leaks, they pay for it out of their budget. That's a paradigm shift of some significance. And so we've talked about in, in our meetings to date, maybe five different ways to, to own and operate this. I think I talked about this a little bit last time. One's pretty much been taken off the table. I guess technically it's still on the table, but I consider it right close to the edge and ready to fall off. And that's an independent taxing entity to own and operate a library building. No one seems to really like that idea. I could never envision supporting it. Another is to turn it over to the library, that we would sort of buy the building and we'd turn it over to the library board. That one doesn't have very much support either. I'd say that's probably in the same regard, there's very little support, but it's not been taken off the table. And then there are sort of three main ways that we've talked about. One would be a sole owner, one of the municipalities. You fill in the blank who that might be. I mean, that's our current model. I offered to take that off the table because frankly, the foundation doesn't like that model very much, probably the library board doesn't like that model very much. Some of our partners may or may not at times like that model, but think the more they dig into it and learn about it, the more they do like it. And so that's still on the table. I mean, that would be the idea that you or we, the city of Hudson, would buy the building and that we'd, we'd lease it to the library. Pros and cons to that? I mean, we would have more control. We could conceivably decide how much of the building they have. And that's also kind of a con to that approach, because for the people that want it to be solely a, a library building, they don't like that idea. But that's still on the table and could be one of the means that, that ends up going forward. And that'll be up to you. If you'd like to take that item off the table right now and tell me, don't negotiate on that, that we wouldn't support, and you can do that anytime you want to, but for right now, that's on the table. And then we come down to sort of two very similar ways. One is what would be called kind of tenants in common, which means on the deed, you all, it says how much you own of it. And then there's an operating agreement that goes with that. It's kind of legalese. The other would be to have, I don't, I mean-
Well, you just own it jointly.
You own it jointly.
Own the whole jointly and you have an-
And you have an agreement that says, here's how it works. Here's who pays for what, who's responsible for what, how decisions will be made, all of those kinds of things. And the final one is a sep, a separate nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization that would be formed, that would have just four members, that would be these municipalities. So we'd sort of own a separate entity and then that entity would have all those same kinds of operating agreements, rules about what if it's dissolved and what if someone wants to drop out and what happens if there's, you're unable to pay your share of it one year, what will happen and so on like that. Those last two are very close. In some ways, some of the exact same things need to be discussed, no matter who, what entity owns it. There's still all those operating decisions to be made. So, that's, that's as much update as I can give you. I mean, it doesn't, I don't think any one individual who's involved with it has a clear idea of how this would work out. I have, throughout the process, said, don't underestimate how difficult it was to bring the joint library agreement together, because it was somewhat difficult. It took the better part of maybe 20 years from the time it was first discussed until it came to pass. And that this particular NMC proposal, despite the fact that we've had passage of non-binding referendums, it still has the potential to break up that joint library agreement. If we can't come together and come with some way to move forward, some of the partners might just say, no, we can't do that, and then we'll, we'll have some tough decisions to make. So, any other questions? We're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Next item is number 15. Renewal of alcoholic beverage licenses for July 1st, 2008 to June 30th, 2009. The Finance Committee, due to running a little late, did not get to this item. You have an issue sheet on this. Staff recommendation is contingent on satisfactory completion of building and fire inspections. Approve the renewal and issuance of licenses for the period July 08 to June 09 to the following. Ellie's on Main-
Wait, that's-
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, this is the updated one. The Nova, Agent John Gaffer, Twisted Grill, Agent Melissa Doll, San Pedro Cafe, Agent Pete Foster. And-
Sorry, would you like a motion on that?
Uh, should we take them separately?
No, I mean, unless someone wants to remove them.
Mr. Mayor, I'll recuse myself from this item.
From the entire item?
Yep.
Mr. Morissette has to be recused.
Okay.
Uh, the second part of the-
Well, I think you should-
I should vote on them separate.
Do the renewals, yeah. Together first.
I'll move that we, do those renewals that you just discussed, and the Nova, Twisted Grill and San Pedro.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Second part is from staff recommendation is to approve contingent on receiving verification from Allstate Liquor, St. Craig County Government Center and the city of Hudson. Proof that payments, verification that payments for outstanding debt have cleared the bank and unsatisfactory completion of building and fire inspections to approve the renewal and issuance of licenses for the period July 1st, 2008 to June 30th, 2009. For Ellie's on Main, Agent Sharon Horn Elstrom. Doughboy's Pizza, Agent Chad Hoyt.
Actually, Dean, the license will be issued to the first entity, with Sharon Horn Elstrom.
Sharon Horn Elstrom LLC, CNL Pizza LLC, Ward Management of Hudson Limited and Ragma That's it.
So moved.
We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I'll second, I'll go ahead. Is there a reason we shouldn't delay the approval of these until the 16th? Because this isn't, doesn't come due until July 1st to see if some of this stuff gets cleared up?
They've actually made the payments. It's just making sure the checks clear and that's, it's, they have issued the checks to pay those items.
One question.
Yes.
Maybe this is normal protocol, but why are we concerned with Allstate Liquor being paid to date?
There's a statute that provides if there's delinquencies and wholesalers liquor bills to, or liquor sales to the licensee, that the license can't be issued. And we did receive notification on one of the licensees.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Next item. We did number 16 already, I believe. Repairs needed for emergency sirens and poles. This is another item we didn't get to at the Finance Committee. We had scheduled to replace the poles supporting two of our tornado and storm warning sirens, civil defense warning sirens. We had scheduled to do that, but had not yet done so when a storm came and blew down one of our main sirens, damaging it beyond repair. A insurance claim has been submitted for that and we've received indication from the insurance that they will be covering the cost of replacing the siren at the top of the pole, less our deductible of $1,000. My suggestion was that we should replace with metal, I guess it'd be steel poles, instead of wood this time. It costs a little bit more to do it that way, but I think it'll be money well spent. And so you have before you an issue sheet and a staff recommendation to accept the quote for total siren and pole reinstallation cost at the 8th Street Siren and Pole of $42,481.96. And to replace the wooden pole out at O'Neill Handley Road at a cost of $15,000. Total cost for both sites is estimated at $57,481.96. I believe that we'll anticipate submitting, how much of it is we're submitting? About 30?
The pole also covered, Nancy? So it could be up to, if they cover the pole also for the 8th Street 1041-
So it could be up to, if they cover the pole also for the A Street 1041,004, that we...
I suspect they'll cover the cost of a wood pole, and the wood pole is around $8,000, and the metal pole is around $15,000.
So we're going to have about $38,000.
So we'll probably have to pay the difference to upgrade.
Could I ask, Eric, I think was involved in some of this, about the need to replace the siren itself on Eighth Street? Can you make, do you have any comments on that?
And would you just determine that it was, you know, it's under repairable?
Did you mean, is there an option of repairing it, or did you mean, do we need to have one there?
No, I'm sorry. This is covered by insurance.
It is.
Yeah. $31,000 is covered by insurance. Okay, thank you. Never mind.
I think it might also be said that I think by going to the steel pole, will we be able to raise the siren substantial amount? Should we talk about that a little bit? You want to come up to the podium, Eric?
Yeah.
Particularly, the Eighth Street pole is directly in a residential neighborhood. When it goes off, when we test it, it is loud for the most adjacent residences. Take it away, Eric.
The current poles are, I believe...
They're forty-five feet, somewhere in that area. FEMA, per FEMA guidelines, that they need to be 123 decibels at ground level from any residential area. The new poles will be seventy feet, meeting all FEMA requirements in that residential area at that time. So they will be significantly higher.
Thank you.
So this is about a $20,000 expenditure by the time we get insurance proceeds and...
Yep. And Anders, who remembers what we bonded for, for this? It was in the bonding, was it not, Betty?
Um, boy, I think it was six thousand dollars.
We bonded for six?
Where does the rest come from?
Well, that's a good question. Again, we would have covered this in Finance Committee, but we ran short. So in the interest of getting this meeting started on time, we didn't really cover that. But I think the possibilities would be, Betty, contingency fund?
I would recommend contingency right now.
I'd like to comment on the cost of these poles. Not too long ago, in preparation for this eventuality, I talked to Excel, and I don't, since this was just printed before, you know, today before we got here, I've not seen it. The cost that was quoted to me by the provider who provides for Excel was $1,750 per pole, $3,700 for two poles. Now, I don't have the notes in front of me. Are they seventy feet high? I can't remember that. But we have a bidding process that we will have to go through here.
It's considered an emergency.
Okay, this is not, this is go-through bidding process.
Okay, but it also would get us...
I would like us to at least, once again, have that conversation with Excel's provider, because they told me that if we took delivery of the poles at the same time they delivered other poles to Excel, we would save substantially on the shipping cost, which is a big part of the cost of these poles, and that we would get them at a much reduced price. I think we need to just investigate that, at least with a couple of phone calls.
In our department head meeting, that exact question, I believe it was there, the question was brought up of, well, will we apply the procurement policy to this? And I said that I think that, and that that procurement policy will come up, or we already did it. There is an exception in there for emergencies that may threaten the health or safety of citizens. I recalled when I was on the Public Works Committee a decade ago or so, when we had gone through a long, involved discussion about upgrading sirens, and should we spend the money and so on. And then a tornado hit Siren, Wisconsin, and within a matter of a few weeks, we had upgraded all the sirens in the city. And with the current tornado climate, I think, depending on how long you want to delay replacing that siren, I'm game to try to save money on it. Or we can do our best to get metal, because that would be wood poles, again, right?
No.
Excel would be, would be steel poles.
Yes.
Okay, then I'm certainly game to try it. Earlier, I had said, before the pole fell down, when we thought we were being proactive and we were going to replace this because it looked like it needed replacement, wood poles need replacement on a scheduled basis, inspection and replacement, right? I had said to Tom Zooli, since you guys do all the light poles, maybe this really ought to be something that, you know, our, fine Mr. Christensen coordinates with Public Works, and Public Works handles replacement of this pole. But now that it's fallen down, it seems like we're kind of, we're out there. I'm open to suggestions here.
Well, I certainly don't want to delay the installation of a safety device like this siren, because it's, I mean, particularly with the history we've had this spring, it's really important to have this. The difference is not a large amount of money, and I would not ever want it, in my conscience, that somebody got hurt to save us $5,000. So in that light, I would say, let's move ahead.
So, just a second now. Let's define terms. So we suspect right now that doing both poles, which the one is an optional expense right now, we could wait until Excel is available and wants to do a metal pole up at O'Neill and Handley, because that one's functioning, it's fine, but we feel like it's time to replace it, replace that wood pole with a metal pole. That one, you could delay. There's no, there's no safety concern on that one. So that's a separate item. On the A Street one that fell down, and insurance, we could let insurance cover putting up a new one for us right now. It's going to cost our deductible of $1,000. So there's that one, if you want to do it that way. Otherwise, this is a point where we can choose to go for metal and pay the difference, and get it taller, nicer for the residents, and longer lasting. Danny, did you have a comment?
In the spirit of expedite things, maybe I'd talk to Excel, see if they have two poles on stock that they'd be willing to give us immediately. We'd change out, once new poles are ordered. That might expedite, if Excel's agreeable to doing something like that, so.
I mean, I'd also be open for you giving me, or Eric and I, some flexibility here to spend up to a certain amount of money. In the end, we are talking about six or $8,000. It's not a lot, but...
Getting back to the issue sheet for a second, this is what confused me. We said the replacement of one pole was $15,000, right?
That's for the replacement of the one up at White Camp.
So a second pole would also be $15,000, so we'd be looking at $30,000.
The price up on top includes the pole for A Street.
Oh, the $31,000?
That includes the pole, the siren, everything.
The forty-two, but fifteen...
Just for a new pole.
That was $10,000. All right, so $10,000 for the pole up there, I see. Okay.
I think Eric had some...
I was going to say, in reference to Scott, when American Signal, the manufacturer of the siren, does, they put out three quote bids for the poles themselves at the seventy-foot Class One type pole. So they do, they do do three bids on the pole pricing. The wood pole that they were getting was approximately $2,700 for the Class One seventy-foot pole. Obviously, you know, obviously, shorter pole's going to be a little bit cheaper. So if Excel does have Class One at seventy feet, that's comparable, so.
So you're talking $2,700 versus $15,000, right?
No, that does include take down and installation. Well, $2,700 is pole alone, fifteen is to take down the current, unmount the siren, rewire it, and all the telemetry and everything, put it back up on a new pole, install a new pole. That's $15,000.
So we got about $10,000 worth of work there, or around there. Okay.
I don't believe we have a motion yet, but at this time, I think we should have one.
I'm about to make it.
Go ahead.
I move that we authorize the duo of our mayor and our EMS director to negotiate the siren and pole, including installation for Eighth Street, up to $45,000. That's a little over the quote. To give you a little wiggle room in case there's something unforeseen. If it's over forty-five, please come back to us. And that we look into separately the cost of a replacement for the O'Neill and Handley Road up in White Camp Park.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
What's the timeframe on this, to get this done, in the interest of safety?
Once the order's made, they said it, four to six weeks.
In the interim, that, you know, he said it's four to six weeks of downtime. We have a siren at the fire station, and we have, we can run manually. Saturday, when the storms were kind of rolling in, I got a little concerned, so I came downtown, and I really couldn't hear the sirens very well from this downtown. So I got a call, old Jim Frye, and we called dispatch and said, "We're going to sound this siren down here, and this one's really loud." So between Eric I and, you know, possibly Jim Frye or the fire department, we, if we got contacted by the dispatch center, we could, you know, run this siren also to, you know, cover this bell on there.
That's good.
There's a possibility, if you think that's a good idea.
Thank you. Any other...
I'd like to ask a question, Eric, because this was a question I was asked a few times this past weekend. And I know the answer to it, but I think it would be good if you tell the audience here and those at home, the process from, how, who authorizes the sounding of the severe storm?
National Weather Service notifies our St. Croix County Communication Center.
The dispatcher.
Yeah, the dispatcher will alert the sirens through radio telemetry. The one siren that is behind the high school is still operational, however, that's phone operated, and it still can be tripped.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, say no. Motion carries. Unfinished business, we have update on projects. We don't have Mr. Schwartz here. You had an update on projects in your packet. Did you have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, the turn signals on Carmichael and Crestview.
Yes.
Last meeting, he said it would be in this last week. Have we heard anything from Mr. Schwartz? I left a message for him today, and he never, I didn't hear back from him.
Tom, do you know anything about that, status of that?
I'm still trying to keep, if it was going to be approved, the votes, you know, the matchup with the other ones.
Okay.
But they were going to check that out last week, I thought, or the week before that. Okay. Tom, could you call him and find out?
Yeah, we'll find out.
That'd sure like to see that get done.
We can do that this week. I'll let you know. Any other questions on the update on projects? All right, let's move on to consider amending zoning code to permit boarding houses in industrial districts through the conditional use process to create Section 255-41G, ordinance number 408. We had a first reading on this. This is on our, before you for a second reading and approval. Mr. Darnold, you have some comments?
If you want to have a motion on the floor before...
I'd like to move to deny the rezoning ordinance number 408.
We have a motion to deny by Mr. Morissette. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion to deny? Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. Let's have a little discussion before we have our next motion. Danny?
The consideration is, and please, there's a point of clarification, the action before you is amend the zoning ordinance, permit boarding houses in industrial districts for nonprofit, administered by nonprofit organizations. This generic amendment to the zoning code does not approve any proposed or pre-discussed boarding house. It only changes the zoning ordinance in a generic sense to permit that. If an applicant would come before us in the future, which is likely, then that would go for a conditional use permit process on which the city has set criteria upon which to review that app, individual application for boarding house. And then we would take into consideration the location, other considerations as listed in the proposed amendment. So I, this, this amendment that's before you does not address a specific proposal.
Let me make one more comment. These boarding houses would be permissible with the same conditional use process in a residential area. Am I right?
Commercial areas.
Commercial area.
Correct.
So that there are large portions of the city right now, besides that industrial area, that, you know, a boarding house could seek a conditional use permit. Other questions? We ready for a motion here?
I just want to explain my purpose of denial. I believe there might be a couple of people here that want to talk to it, whether that's Jermaine Toot or not tonight anyways. But it does negatively impact the potential of what that whole industrial was zoned for. It's not zoned for a boarding house up there. That's industrial park. So I don't see it. I think it would negatively impact the residents in the area, and I've heard from a few of them already. So that was my reasoning.
Okay. Are there any citizens present who'd like to speak to this issue? I think, Council, is that all right with you, if we hear from anyone present? Yeah. Why don't you come up to the lectern and give us your name and address, please, and then address the Council?
I'm Ruth Zeeman, 1307 Hagan Street. I'm vice president of the Prairie Point Condominium Association, and we in that association have passed a petition in regard to this rezoning. And I'd like to submit that to you now.
Sure.
Let's, I just bring it to you?
You can. Why don't you, let's pass that to the clerk. And what does it say at the top of the petition?
Just that we are opposed to the rezoning, changing from the industrial to the...
Okay, so we, the undersigned residents of Prairie Point Condominium Association, do hereby object to amending city code to allow the former Bear Buddies daycare facility at the corner of Hagan Street and Bowdrie Boulevard to become a residential drug treatment center for women and their children operated by Open Door Rescue Mission. No sign?
We are directly across from it.
Live directly across. Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Just a general concern.
Okay. Is there anyone else? Yes.
Jerry Klecker, I live on First Street in Hudson. I own thirty-two units of rental property, one and a half to two blocks from Bear Buddies. And in that complex, we have two cul-de-sacs, one Hazel Court and one across the road on Mount Crowe Drive. And for some reason, cul-de-sacs seem to be a gathering point for people that are waiting for other people. We monitor our properties quite carefully, and it's not unusual to have cars of people waiting in the cul-de-sac for other, not my residents, but other residents down the street, because they're waiting for a time period, and they're killing time, basically, in that area. I've also had occasion where I've had young men sitting in the cul-de-sac, basically watching some of my tenants sunbathing. And when they're confronted, they admitted to the fact that they're up there to see other people, not my tenants, but in the area of that complex, and they're just killing time. My main concern is that this is a fairly common thing up there, and it's very easy to have people that come into the area. If you have short-term residency, which is what the boarding house concept is, you're bringing more and more people to that area to either visit or to have some time on their hands to kill while they're waiting for some of the people to come in. They're ending up being parked in the residential area, at least in mine, but they could also be parked in the industrial areas. This is different than the businesses, which have people come and visit them. They come during the daytime, they leave in the evenings, and we don't have anybody, I've not run across anybody in my complexes, who have been waiting for a business to open or for a business appointment. So I'm against the rezoning, basically, because it's likely to bring in more people who have time to kill, and they're going to end up either in my cul-de-sacs or the other residential areas in the neighborhood up there, which are relatively quiet and relatively out of the, out of the way, once you get off of Hagan Street. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone, other than Tom, is there anyone else here that wishes to speak in favor? favor? Yes, sir.
My name is Kevin Cooley. I live in North Hudson. I've been living here since nineteen ninety-three. I've been involved with the St. Croix County Jail, Jail Ministry as a volunteer, and through my experience, I've seen a need for something like this, and especially for women. And I know, I grew up in Madison, Wisconsin, on the south side. I know it's life to live in a tough neighborhood, but I also know that we all live in a very nice community, but there are things that go on underneath that are crying for help, and this is one of them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Larry Church, thirteen eleven Hagan Street in Prairie Point. For those of us that aren't too terribly familiar, Prairie Point is a very small community. There are twenty townhomes, five four-plexes. A lot of, I'm also president of the board up there. A lot of our residents are elderly, single ladies, and given the climate of things today and the reputation Hudson's established for itself lately, they're very much concerned about this. They don't like the idea, we've had a little bit of filth, a little bit of vandalism, but things stolen, and they are concerned, and I think, I think they deserve consideration. Most of them are old-line Hudsonites, who've lived here for years, they're by themselves now, and they deserve some attention. And also, the ones of us that aren't single or by ourselves are concerned about property values.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this? Tom, do you have anything more to say?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to apologize for my interruption earlier for not knowing the process of the meeting here. One of the considerations we were giving to locating in the industrial park is the closeness to job opportunities for our residents, and so that's why we're considering the industrial We gotta remember that the people we're going to serve are community members now, and they are either going to get help or they're not. If they're not going to get help, they are going to be detrimental to our neighborhoods, regardless of where our neighborhoods are. If they do get help, they are going to be living in a secured, structured program where they have things to do all the day long. They, they will be monitored, they will not have free time to roam and that sort of thing. They are structured so that, they do want to change, they have a willingness to change, and we are going to help them do that. If, if we are not there to help them, they are going to continue in the lifestyle that they have now, which is in and out of the jail system, or being abused by spouses and various other things that happen. I myself talked with a member of the board at Prairie Point today, and I was very welcomed to speak with them, and I, upon this passing, I am going to call that person and set up a meeting with their board. On Wednesday, I was gonna make that call, and I spoke to another resident there also yesterday that called me, and very open to the idea of locating in the industrial park. It's someone that has known me for a long time.
Thank you.
Could I ask one question?
Yes.
I know tonight, we're just looking at whether or not we're gonna make this district like our other districts. It seems like there's a question of, when you get this done, there's gonna be five people, ten people? I mean, what's the size of, that's not a very big building, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, we have looked at the building facility, and it looks like it will support about fourteen residents, temporary residents.
And, and I would reemphasize something that Denny Darnold said here, is that what's before us now is the idea of, would you ever allow a boarding house within an industrial park, anywhere within our industrial zoning? That's really the question right now. If you say no to that, then clearly this one won't happen. But even if you say yes to it, then there's the specific, specific conditional use process by which we will start all over again with public hearings, specific to this location, to this proposal, how many residents will be allowed, which will be something you'll be able to dictate. Tom says fourteen. You could say five. And then he has to decide whether this is a viable site for him on that. There are any number of conditions that could be put on, including that there'd be review in three months, six months, a year, am I right, Denny? I mean, you can, you can control that process as tightly as possible to allow for the eventual discovery of issues or problems that we don't know about right now.
Yeah, I only asked the question just to, you know, baseline and understanding for everybody.
The Plan Commission held a public hearing, but I'm not sure that neighboring residents were notified of the Plan Commission's public hearing on this.
Right.
Yep, it's not required by...
Say, I'm those area individual in Hudson?
Exactly. And so this may have seemed non-controversial, you know, has sailed along, and now you might be sort of caught unawares tonight that there is opposition. I'm not certain if you are or not, but, you know, we're ready for a motion. We have on our agenda a second reading of this proposed ordinance. It's in your hands. We can delay it further, we can vote it up or down right here.
I have one other question, if I may, Mr. Mayor. At this point, did I understand you correctly in saying that all other areas within the city, other than this particular district or light industrial district, does allow boarding houses?
Commercial. I misspoke before, I said residential, I meant to say it was commercial.
So, the business park or anywhere along, which districts would that include? Which areas of the city?
Includes all of B2 zoning, right? B2.
B2 and the B3, downtown and the general business district, which we commonly refer to as the hill area.
Mm-hmm.
And it does not contain any industrials, so the St. Croix Business Park would not be able to, the Hudson Industrial Park, nor the St. Croix Ventures Industrial Park, any other individual parcels zoned for an industrial would not, at this time, be able to have a boarding house in those districts.
The, the, I guess I would just make one more comment, then I think we should have a motion. The question for us to balance is the overall community need for this type of facility, and do we want to make it easier for this type of facility to be established in Hudson or not? And then there's this, I mean, and if you don't, or if you want to prohibit it all right now, then, you know, we can just not amend our code.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, Jermaine, to that point.
Sure.
The fact of the matter is, the issue sheet from Plan Commission also suggests that this was one of the sites that these folks had looked at, so there are other sites that these folks have in mind or had in mind. So why should we bend the rule to change the zoning to allow it up there?
Okay. Throughout this process, you know, we have stated repeatedly that this is not specific to this one individual proposal. The, Tom's proposal, this is happening because he asked, because, but our project first is to talk about, do we want to amend the overall zoning? So, that's where it's at. I guess I'm not aware of what other sites, and maybe it isn't...
Jermaine?
Jermaine, really, I mean, it's a question of, would you ever permit this in an industrial zoning? I really don't see the problem with it in industrial. In any zoning, the challenges at the zone, at the transition from one zone to another.
It is.
This particular proposal is right on the edge, and it happens to be on an edge where you've got industrial and then residential. So that's kind of a critical fault line, if you will, of transition, where what happens there, so just, I mean, you will now know that, I mean, as we go forward into a conditional use process, should this pass tonight, that, you know, there are some issues for us to deal with there.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, one of the intentions I have is, if this does pass, I am intending to meet neighbors of any location that I am looking at to start the process of, of hearing their concerns and addressing their concerns.
Okay, we had a motion that failed for lack of second. I, do you want more discussion, or...
Can I state my motion?
The floor is open, you have the floor right now.
I moved in deny once again, the amendment zoning, the ordinance number four dash zero eight.
We have a motion to deny ordinance dash, or four dash zero eight. Is there a second? Is there a second to the motion to deny? Is there a second to the motion to deny? Motion fails for lack of a second.
Move the table.
We have a motion to table.
A second.
And a second. Motion to table is not debatable. All in favor of a motion to table, say aye.
Aye.
I hear two votes. Opposed, say no.
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 I hear four votes. The floor is open for another motion.
I will at this time move for approval of amending the zoning code to permit boarding houses in industrial districts through a conditional use permit.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the, to permit boarding houses in industrial zoning districts through the conditional use process. Essentially, you're saying approve ordinance four dash oh eight, that's had a first reading?
Yes.
To approve the second reading?
Yes, it's ordinance dash, four dash oh eight. Would like to comment on my motion, because I, at least, am on a knife's edge on this Mr. Henness comes well recommended by people I've talked to, that he does good work. He makes an excellent point that the people we're talking about already exist in our community, and I'm kind of in favor of putting them some, having them someplace where they can be helped, rather than not helped, and, and continue to exist in sort of a underground manner in our community. At the same time, this is a motion to approve this ordinance, this zoning change. Going from that to what has been the Bear Buddies building is a long way. I have received comments already from people in the area, not in my district, from people in other districts, who do not want this to happen. They present good arguments. I think Randy has presented an excellent point, that it is somewhat disingenuous to, for us to say, "Well, we're not talking about the Bear Buddies building, we're talking about a general ordinance, a zoning change," when in fact, we would not be talking about this if the number one choice was somewhere else. I think that we are talking about this because of the Bear Buddies building. But that is a process that should be allowed to unfold, in front of the Plan Commission, where the public will be heard, and again, in the full council, where the public will be heard, and that's the process I want to go through. I believe Mr. Henness is absolutely correct, these are people in our community that we should state, take steps to protect. At the same time, we have to balance that with the security of the neighborhoods that already exist. I think we need to go through that process and make a determination on a specific site, whatever that site will be, although we all think we know what it is, at the end of that discussion. I don't think saying no, at this point, is the proper thing to do, and it will not help anyone. No may be the ultimate answer to this site, but that's a process that should be allowed to take its democratic course.
Thank you. Are there other comments, Lori?
I have one question. When these boarding houses are allowed in areas, in, in commercial areas, do we go through the same conditional use process? Okay, so we would be having this discussion if they were looking to locate in a, in a commercial area adjacent to a neighborhood?
Right.
So, this doesn't seem all that...
They're, they're, they're two blocks away from having, you know, the same discussion.
Okay.
Would I be right to say that if it was a daycare being proposed for that site, we'd probably have a conditional use permit for that, too?
Yes. The answer would be no, because it's already been used as a daycare, so...
No, but I mean, in general, in an industrial, wouldn't it be a conditional use?
That's correct. It would require a conditional use permit, even if kids positive to require a conditional use permit up in the business park.
Are there other comments?
I would like to make one comment that is...
Let me see if there's anyone else first, since you already spoke. Randy, do you have anything more to say?
I'll observe my, the rest of my arguments for the later time, when we can pursue it.
Pam?
No, not at this point, thanks.
Alan?
No.
Scott?
Just want to say, the number fourteen is alarming to me.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no.
No.
I hear one no. Motion carries, and ordinance four dash oh eight is adopted. Next item on the agenda is item number C, recommendation from Finance Committee to enter into an agreement for health insurance consulting services.
Last Wednesday, the Finance Committee met with four consultants and/or brokers, met with them, interviewed them, discussed different options for how the, we would go about determining whether there were other options for, other than the state plan for our health insurance for our employees. There was an original contract I had sent out, and then I had emailed the amendment. The committee asked that the group that was chosen, which is Associated Financial Group, consider a six-month contract, reason being is, there is still the possibility that, for whatever reason, whichever group we would have selected would recommend that we stay with the state. I mean, there is that possibility, so the committee felt that we didn't want to go with a full year, because if we stay with the state plan after six months, we would be paying for services that we wouldn't need. Catherine, talked to Deb Swahovick today, so with Deen's permission, I'll turn it over to Catherine, let her, about the con, specific problems with the contract, the issues.
Sure. First of all, did everyone get a copy of the new proposed contract?
They were emailed, I emailed them.
It wasn't, it's not the same contract that was in your packet?
Yes, I did email that to you.
To all council members?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I had some just concerns about the contract, and part of it is just needing direction from the Finance Committee and the council on certain issues that were in this new contract that weren't in the original one that she provided. Basically, what I did, well, I'll just go through the issues that I had. I didn't know, if you have it in front of you, I wasn't certain what was meant under paragraph D, where it lists out a consulting fee relationship and a marketing fee relationship.
Excuse me, Catherine, would you like me to write and make copies?
I've got copies.
You do have? I'd like to have a copy, I didn't get it printed.
Actually, what I, I made some amendments or revisions at the suggestion of the mayor, but they're more just related to the issues I see. I'm not necessarily recommending them, but they are language that would cover the issues that I see. Anyway, what I got from discussing it with Evan and Deen was that the Finance Committee was really looking for a consulting fee-for-service type relationship to handle both putting together bids, bid documents for soliciting insurance bids, and then dealing with employees in terms of comparing and analyzing, well, first off, comparing and analyzing any bids that are received, and making a recommendation to the council on, you know, how they compare to the state plan, which the city is currently under, and if they compare favorably substantially similar benefits and better costs, then handling the process with employees on educating and dealing with possibly changing the plan. I forgot a big step, actually collecting health information from employees and meeting with employees in order to be able to have the information so that insurance providers can bid on it. So that's what the committee was looking at, and wanting to do this on primarily a fee-for-service basis, related commission basis. When I got the contract... When I got the contract, yet, if you'll look on the second page, it talks about contingency compensation and commission compensation. I talked with Debbie, I didn't see any real material difference between contingency compensation and commissions. The contingency compensation just recognizes that these people, the consultant included, do get payments from insurance companies. I frankly don't know why some are called contingency compensations, some are commission, maybe contingency is not based on a percentage, I don't know. In any event, it's a payment from the insurance company to the consultant. And this contract sets it up that they, the consultant would be entitled to that, and that would be in addition to the service fee the city is paying. I wasn't certain if that's what the committee envisioned. So I, and she's, in talking with her, she said she's fine working either way, having no contingency compensation, no commission, if that's how the city wants to go forward. If you'll look at page two, the paragraph on commissions, you clearly have a, an option to say you don't want AFG to receive commissions for any, from any of the services it provides. It doesn't say the same for contingency. She said she's fine with working either way, and the contract could be amended. I'm not certain what the city wants. The reality is, what she shared, and I think she shared with the committee also, is that rates are likely, or may stay the same regardless of whether a contingency payment is made or commission is paid to the consultant or any broker that the city would be working with. And so, I guess what I'm wanting you to understand is, at least the way I understand it, is the rates the city pays won't necessarily change if there's no commission and no contingency. However, what you're getting, if there's no commission and no contingency, presumably is a consultant that has no final, financial interest in any of the potential contracts that the city is looking at, and so is giving you advice and analysis based on no financial interest or potential interest in the contracts.
Catherine, could I ask you a question about the math on that? Because although the rate to us is a gross rate, it may not change, may not be netted down in, in return for some commission paid to a broker, in this case, it may be this person or this group, wouldn't we not save money by changing this contract, that any commissions earned or given to the broker be turned over to the city?
I, that's a possibility that has not been discussed with the consultant. I don't know, I have no idea what the contractual arrangement is between the insurance providers and the consultant. I would think AFG, not necessarily this specific person, but AFG would be able to decide what it wants to do with any commissions it receives.
Look, let me, you weren't finished with all your comments.
No, but this was a major-
You're getting to renewal, right? So let me just say that, in this instance, the immediate instance, we don't have very much to lose in the situation. If they, if they got the commission, it would mean we were saving money, and they're making some money on it. We wouldn't switch unless it was to our financial interest to switch. That's year one. But then there's the question of, if there was a renewal, that may not be the case. See, if there was suddenly a large premium increase, then they might have a cross incentive, where it's, it's to their benefit that we stay despite the big increase, and it begins to be opposite for us. And that's part of our concern, is that if, if we leave the state plan, we can't get back in the state plan for three years. We can only get rate, rating, and what's the term? The underwriter will give us a rate for only the first year. Second and third year, because they don't have claims experience for us, because the state plan won't release claims experience, they really don't know, and the best we could get would be maybe some assurance for the second year, but certainly not for the third year.
On rates?
Right, and also it's common, because of the size of our group, the smaller the group, the more it's a fault that is. All, all of the people we talked to have said that.
So, go ahead.
What, I'm just trying to understand, you, this is an indefinite contract, or is there a time?
Well, the other issues I had with it, it's automate, set up as automatically renewable, or it, that it automatically renews unless there's a material breach. I generally, especially in the first year of a contract like this, I don't know that the city would want to do that, to have it automatically renew, I think you'd want to review it. But that was, you know, in the contract, and I don't know that it's anything the committee discussed, but-
I thought it was a three, three, a six-month contract, and if nothing, if we were not switched out of the state pool, contract is done.
That's, that much is true, but if you are out of the state pool-
Correct.
-the contract continues for the next six months-
Six hundred dollars a month, right?
A thousand, well, another six, except that, the other provision that's a little different is that it, under the contract, the entire compensation is earned upon signing the contract, so that it's not just a thousand dollars a month. I think, you know, if you don't get out of the state plan, obviously six thousand dollars is your, that's what you've agreed to pay, and then it's done. If you continue, then the other six thousand isn't a per month, it's the entire amount. And that's where having it automatically renewable or renewed, I would have concerns with.
Yeah, because wouldn't it be in their favor not to sign us out of there, and then they can just keep charging us?
Well, let's, let's try to draw this to, to a point here, Catherine. You made some suggestions to correct these deficiencies-
Yep, I did.
-that we saw, and you've given us the, your proposed changes-
Yep.
-that correct, that takes care of all of your concerns.
Well, let's, yeah, I did get rid of the, on page two, on page one, I just added a little bit of language about assisting with collective bargaining, bargaining if the client requests, if, if you guys request. On page two, I made contingency compensation, the consultant not entitled to contingency compensation. Under commissions, the city would circle not entitled to any commissions. Under number six, I would say, I changed it to, that the premium compensation, not the premium, but the compensation is deemed fully earned as of the time of the agreement, except that it wouldn't apply if AFG terminates the agreement for reasons other than material breach. So I wouldn't want the city to get into month seven, AFG terminates, and you're still responsible for the full compensation. I did change the renew, termination, not, I took out the material breach language, so that either party can terminate. Material, there's not much the city has to do under this agreement, it's just pay the compensation and provide information. There is a lot that AFG has to do, and you could get into a dispute about what constitutes material breach, and I just don't think you want to be there. And I took out the automatically renewable provision, so that's pretty much-
I suggest that you authorize that I execute this contract with the changes that she's made.
I wanted to make another comment along the same lines as Scott, and that is if the, as she did mention, one, one of the parties we discussed said, no problem, we can cut it down by whatever the compensation is, the, the commissions, where she said, no, we can't, because the price to you is going to be the same, and even though we say we don't get the commissions, they just keep it. There may be a middle ground here, where we say, any commissions paid to, to them then reduces the monthly compensation that we pay them.
Well, my recollection of that was that both of them said that we can ask for it to be priced net of commission.
Correct.
The price you get back may or may not be net of commission, you won't know, because a lot of the large insurance groups just won't do that. They're going to give you their price, and they responded to your request to do it net of commission, but you don't really know, and they aren't necessarily revealing it.
So if we don't ask them to do it net of commission, the commission will be paid, they will receive it, and they can use it as a write-off against our monthly premium we pay them, because they will get it if we don't say price it net, right?
The insurance company, I don't know that they would, there would be any way to reduce our monthly. You're saying that they would pay the commission, and then AFG would give us the money back?
AFG would, instead of paying us a thousand dollars a month, they pay us a thousand dollars less the commission they'd received from receiving commissions. So that way, they, they, we, you wouldn't upset the system that already trans, you know, it already pays commissions by normally.
I, I don't think either, I think, my recollection is the same as Dean, both the consultants said that they can say net of commission, but they won't know, they won't get the commission, but there's no guarantee that it'll be given. So I don't know that either of these consultants said any way they would know.
But if you say, don't do it net of commission, then the consultants will get paid.
Correct, similar to the brokers, yes.
You following me?
And then use that amount to reduce the thousand dollars a month that we're paying them.
For service and commission.
Whether they'll do that or not, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't-
If we're closing the deal, they're going to get paid, and every year after this, they're going to get paid that we stay on that plan.
I think-
Can I add a little comment here? I think what we are talking about kind of smells. It's a kickback, it would be defined as a kickback. I think we have to keep it straight on board. When we start talking commissions, it might feel right, it might sound good, but we have to look at what we're doing. I think we're asking for a service, we want to pay a service fee. I think restricting if she makes commissions behind the scene is probably a good idea. I think in the interest of the city, you want a good thing, not based on what she's going to get out of it. And I think when you start talking about receiving the compensation that she gets back into the city, or reducing her fees by it, I think that we could probably look a little not good. So I wouldn't suggest that the council go that way.
She works both ways.
Then it wouldn't make any sense for us to request, like you mentioned, it wouldn't make us, any sense for us to request less commissions.
With Catherine's, with Catherine's contract, as she's prepared it, on page two, the box in number four is checked, that says, client does not want AFG to receive commissions for some or any, and I guess we would circle-
Any.
Yeah.
Any of the services that AFG may provide our broker under the agreement, regardless, and so on. And it pretty well does, just what we've been talking about, just be aware that insurance companies don't necessarily have, here's price A, this is with your broker commission, here's price B, this is without it, they don't have that. So they, and they go through a whole actuarial thing, and they may or may not be willing, so that, to do what Betty's saying, there is a certain amount of uncertainty there. We, you know, we may not get the absolute lowest price that way, I don't know, but I think it's going to be pretty close either way. The maximum commission, just so you know what we're talking about here, we got a million dollars a year in premium, the commission structure runs two to three percent typically, so you're talking twenty to thirty thousand dollars that they're making. We're hiring a consultant for a thousand dollars a month.
Why would we then feel that this was an agent on, working on our behalf, and not an agent working on someone else's behalf? We're paying less money. I just, I disagree, loathe though I am to disagree with our finance director, Betty, I disagree that we're, this is a smelly kickback scheme. We are simply asking our agent to be our agent, and not receive compensation from someone else, to be their agent.
That's what the contract does. It's just, and the contingency compensation also is, is changed so that AFG isn't entitled to any contingency compensation. What you're doing is you're paying, you're deciding, we want to pay twelve thousand dollars to get an aid, a, a person who will look objectively at the various contracts, who does not have a financial interest in the contract.
Six thousand dollars.
Yeah, and so you're willing to pay six thousand dollars at the outset for doing all this upfront work, to get a good comparison. And that is upfront work that you may not get from just your, your average agent. And that's with no, you know, guarantee of-
I understand your point, I, and I don't want to belabor this, and I'll give it up, but I think that we are going to be remiss if we do not work out some sort of arrangement whereby we, we pay what the, the stated amount from the insurance agency, insurance company, assuming that we do, do this, we're going to, I think safely assume that some sort of compensation is going to be paid to that broker.
That's, yeah, I don't know the answer to that.
And that money should devolve to the, to the city if at all possible. For us to just say, well, you know, can't do anything about it, it's okay, that's not a very satisfactory answer, when it's our money.
Well, it would either stay in the insurance company, or it may be paid to the broker.
And it would be nice if the broker reduced their fee accordingly.
Well, I suggested that same thing to Catherine today, I mean, we, certainly something we could go back. We did not discuss this with this consultant yet, but if you'd like us to, we could ask that, you know, we'll give, we'll give it to you, you can take the commission as long as all commissions are remitted to us.
Yeah.
I'd actually make money on this. I mean, the commission, at least, in River Falls, it's a one-person commission, she works on commission only, she's worked there for many years, I understand, but under that scenario, the commission exceeds any-
It's about the same.
Oh, okay.
I have one other-
Go ahead.
One, sorry, one other, how does the renewal occur? Since after a year, we terminate this agreement, and they're no longer receiving commissions, because we said that we don't want them to receive commissions, yet we stay on the plan for another ten years.
Well, you need to decide, I guess, just since it's a new arrangement, what she's offering is services to monitor the health insurance benefit, to answer questions, to be looking at ways to reduce the city's costs in terms of, or by way of wellness-type programs, and to be looking at other options available, or negotiating benefits on behalf of the city that the city would like. So she's, that's a service. We can have language in there that, I just didn't like the automatic, automatically renewable, when it's the first year of a whole new type of contractual relationship and service.
So, you see what I'm asking, though?
But towards the end of the, I mean, we can have a, the parties will, you know, negotiate renewal terms within sixty days of the termination of the contract. I think this also needs to have a defined term, which it doesn't, a one-year, and then-
It's pretty open-ended in favor of them.
Of course, that would, you know, give them the option as well, to say, you know, we're not willing to do it on that basis, that fee-for-service. This was the twelve thousand plus three percent per year increase.
All right. We do have some time pressure, we could postpone for two weeks if you'd like. I sense maybe this issue needs a little bit more work. Otherwise, what I'm hearing is, we got to amend it right now, cook up some amendment.
Just cook it up?
Well, there's a contract before you-
I think you need to make a decision on the contingency commission.
The floor is open for a motion. We can either do, we can take it the way it is here, which I think accurately reflects the way that our subcommittee left the room, we had chosen a consultant, and we had a framework for how we wanted her to be paid, we asked for shortening it to six months, we got that. We asked for them to give us a contract, they gave it to us, we've had you review it, you've got suggested changes which are before us. Now, if you want to do it differently, we can do it differently. But otherwise, I'd say, let's go forward with this.
I'd like to ask a question of Devin, who I think has been closely involved with this. If we make the changes that I've discussed and that Lee has discussed, whereby we would get some compensation if there is a broker fee, we're going to be asking Catherine to redo this and come back to us in two weeks. It's then going to go to, to them, to Associated Financial Group. They're going to have some time to respond. If, by the end of that process, does this put us behind the eight ball, because that's exactly where we wound up before, without enough time?
Yes, they, July first is what they're saying, they would start sooner, they all wanted to get going on it right away, because we have to know, all of this has to take place by October first, well, by mid-September really, because that, you guys have to take action, and we have to get the unions on board. So, you know, delaying it in the July would be an issue.
First of all, we can't, we cannot accept a rebate, it's called rebate, and it's against the law to get a rebate. So we may- So we may ask for, but they can't rebate, an insurance agent can't rebate money back to the client.
Well, that solves that question.
Yeah, see.
So, we can ask for all this stuff, but it's against the law to do it.
Where were you ten minutes ago?
We've got an agreement, we've tried for two years or maybe longer than that. We've got a chance, we had a twelve thousand, we got it down to six thousand dollars for an opportunity to get a bid on our insurance, which we haven't had for seven years, maybe ten years, since we went to the state.
Twenty.
Okay, this is something, if we delay and miss another year on it, probably costs us another two to three hundred thousand dollars a year more than we should be paying. And I think it's important for us to, I will make the motion that we.
There we go.
Accept this contract for Associated, so we can move forward and try and get a bid.
I will second the motion.
We have a motion in a second, any more discussion?
I have one question on the contingency payment.
Contingency payments are, are something that, that can or cannot be given to an agent by a insurance company based on performance, how big they are, their loss ratio, there's all kinds of things that we're not really privy to. Now, we can ask for that information.
But, so, I'm just, they allow us under this contract that they gave to say no commissions, she said she can say no contingency, is there anything that you know that would indicate differently?
No, I, I think, you know, she can't take any contingencies on that.
Okay.
Okay, and so what we're agreeing to right now is theoretically, a company that we will use year after year for about twelve thousand dollars a year, unless we decide to terminate this. And they, their company won't receive anything from, any broker fees, the only money they'll receive is from us, is that how I understand it?
That's the idea, but we don't have an absolute assurance that there's no, like a contingency fee. I mean, this might kick their total volume for the year with, with Medica over some threshold that makes them, you know, win a thousand. We aren't gonna have any way of knowing that, and we can't control it, and it probably doesn't really matter to us.
And Lee, I think we can get out of this agreement.
How about the renewable? Did you want it renewable or not?
I think, no, I think we can get that agreement, we can get out of this agreement by sending an agent a record letter to the next agent down the street if we don't, if we're not happy with it.
That was what I was gonna ask, is what happens at the end of the year, if we don't keep them, do we have to drop the insureds, or can we move it?
No, the company, we can go to another agent who represents that particular company and say, we don't like the work they've done for us.
That's what I was missing, thank you.
The amount of work that we're asking this consultant to do.
It's a lot.
Is a lot, and to get this negotiated for them to volunteer, not volunteer, but to agree to do this for us for six thousand dollars, I mean, I think is really something we shouldn't pass up.
That's the piece I was missing, thank you.
So basically, it's this as revised.
Right, and have you talked to her about the revisions?
I, I didn't get a chance, I left a message for her, I talked with her before I revised it, and she said she was okay with contingency and commissions. I didn't get a chance to talk with her about the renewable and the termination.
By doing this tonight, if there's major issues, we still got the meeting on the sixteenth.
Correct.
To address, if there's something that.
If there's a major issue, I might call a special meeting just to get this, because I don't want us to get behind the eight ball on this where we're time pressured.
It was her intent when I talked to her that even her contract says July first.
Call a question.
Questions been called, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. Let's move on, we've got a couple items left. Next is the application for a taxicab service license filed by Elijah Amueno, Robert Isaac, Stephen Momani, and taxicab drivers licenses for those three individuals. The, we held a public hearing tonight on the issue. I think the issue here is, is it in the best interests of the city to have more taxicab providers? Is one part of it, because as you read the ordinance, it, it gives us that as part of our consideration. I don't particularly agree with that, because I believe competition will probably in the long run benefits. But as you heard from our current taxicab company, he felt there's not enough business really for the two. With that discussion.
Yeah, I'm in favor, 'cause I do also believe that competition makes us better operators. And having been in the hotel business in Hudson over ten years at one point, taxis were not always available twenty-four hours a day, or when needed. Or my guests at the time would wait hours for a taxi ride, just to go downtown to eat or whatnot. So if there's more, more than we can get in for the hotel people and our guests, I'm in favor of that.
Yes, question.
You mentioned, and I don't know if this is a couple of times, we have some location, where you'd be operating out of.
Yes.
Menominee, two armed cities, I'm just curious where they'll be dispatched from.
Well, Elijah, would you like to, or one of the three of you, would you like to come up and answer questions? Let me just say this, that, you know, we, we have a fairly extensive section of our code that regulates taxicabs. And someone who chose to be located in Lakeland, I'm not a hundred percent positive they'd fall under all the restrictions that are in that code, are they? I mean, if someone calls a taxicab that's based out of the Twin Cities, do we require all the same background checks and so on? I mean, essentially, we're regulating people that are located locally here and come to us for a license.
I'm not sure, you're calling airport taxis as well, so I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, so where's, where are you located?
Our office is in Lakeland, we're basically right here in Hudson.
Yeah. Okay, all right, so the second part of this is the decision of whether the applicant is fit, willing, and able to perform such public transportation, so you may give some consideration to that aspect. Do you have specific questions then, while she's looking up the code? Do you have questions of location or something of that sort?
Yeah, I was just curious where they would be dispatched from, because.
Actually, it's, it's Menominee.
So if someone calls from Hudson, you'd be sending a car from Menominee, okay.
Were you gonna have people around the area on a?
Ah, yes, I would be having somebody.
So you won't have, they're not coming directly from Menominee? 'Cause otherwise, we're waiting forty minutes for a cab ride.
No.
Okay.
Well, I think maybe for clarification then, what you're saying is that when a customer would call, they would be calling someone who was physically located in Menominee, and that someone would then call a taxi that's closer in the general vicinity here to.
Exactly.
Is that it?
Yep.
So the dispatcher would be in Menominee, but the, the vehicle would be somewhere closer.
So you're gonna have actually a, a building here with vehicles, or are you just gonna have individuals who take them home?
Eventually, yes, I would have a building here. Eventually, yes, I would have a building here in Hudson.
But now it sounds like you have people who live here who'll take a cab, a taxicab home with them and just dispatch from their homes?
Pardon?
Are, are you suggesting you're gonna have people who live here that drive a taxicab with your name on it, and you're calling the home to distribute, or how, how does that kinda work?
I'm assuming that if there would be licenses, the taxi will be operating in four hours.
I didn't understand, say it again.
I'm not sure he understands your question.
I didn't understand your question.
Are these the only three taxi drivers?
Yes.
Okay, and so you'll be.
That is, no, no more.
So you drive up from Menominee and, and stay here and wait for a call?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Mayor, are you looking for a motion?
I am, well.
I'm not sure what your question was.
Well, my question relates to the whole licensing of taxicabs. I suspect, as probably you do, that we then have a lot of unlicensed taxicabs operating here, because anyone who takes a taxi home from the airport that they got at the airport is now an unlicensed taxicab
Right.
in the city of Hudson. So the question becomes, when we're making the people that come to us and wanna license go through all kinds of hoops, when really, a lot of the fares that are being picked up aren't here going through this process. Maybe I'm wrong about that, but, am I right?
Yeah, yeah, you're right, and also the city cats will come on here, they'll be looking to the airport.
Right.
The other thing is, actually, I just saw the police chief just kind of reached about how the city cats come in to downtown, bring people down here, that they're coming, and people often take them out to the cities. You know, suburban green light airport, they'll come in here. Because we, you know, I had mentioned the police chief about, there's a certain company that's operating in the area that's, that's unlicensed. And, you know, we kinda mentioned that, he's like, well, as long as they're, you know, leaving the city, he goes, I'm not gonna do that for all that stuff.
Well.
Just depreciates the value of my business.
We are ready for a motion here, I mean, we've, you've got the, the issue before you.
But, but are we, I mean, is this, if, if this is only talking about taxicabs that have buildings and, and
No.
vehicles within the, that operate within the city, or not those that visit? Well.
It says, I mean, this probably needs some work, but it says, "No person shall transport passengers for hire by taxicab within the city, nor shall any person solicit passengers for hire by taxicab without first having obtained a license as prov-" So, I think the intent is that if they're soliciting within the city and essentially operating on a regular basis within the city, they need a license. But it, the, the exact words don't say that. If they're transporting, technically, they need a license, but that makes little sense. I would just comment that it's really not the city's function to restrict competition, so that, you know, making that a basis for a decision would not be appropriate. I think what this, the intent of the ordinance is to do a, a background check, make sure that there's insurance, make sure there's licensed drivers, to protect the health and welfare of the city to the extent possible.
If it were up to me, I would wipe out about six pages of that city code, and I'd say, you know, if you're licensed in any other city in Minnesota or Wisconsin, that's fine with us, and you can come in here, and it would take care of the whole thing.
I have a question, does it, now, lists how many taxis could be licensed in this city, then, or?
No.
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 No, because really, the market will determine that.
Well, you know.
And by service, basically.
You know, I know the ordinance needed work for years, you know, but I know, like many others are saying about big cities like that, they limit the number. I thought Hudson had to limit the ordinance, which, you know.
No.
I don't see that.
No specific numbers. I mean, it is implied when, when it says, "The council should determine if taxicab service is required by the public convenience and necessity." That's sort of getting into that it lets us regulate the competition, which that has been the history in the taxicab industry. I don't agree with it, I'd rather we not get into it, I think it's legally, it's not our role, it shouldn't be our role. So, with that, here we are, we have an issue, do you wish to make a motion? Mr. Burchill, you raised your hand, I saw your finger twitch.
I'm gonna move to approve, please.
You moved to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second, further discussion?
I think that we're trying to regulate what is essentially an unregulated industry, we oughta give it up. So let's just vote on this and be done with it.
Well.
Make sure that it's contingent on them getting the certificates of insurance and the taxis inspected.
Yes.
Yes.
Further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no. How about, what committee would best look into revising our taxicab ordinance?
Finance.
Finance, yeah, thank you. Motion carried, the next thing is review plans and specs and authorize Bonastro to advertise for bids for the Hanley Road Pathway Improvements Project.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Tom to come to the podium for a second, please, for discussion of this? The reason I'm asking for Tom to, Tom Zuli to come to the podium is that there has been discussion amongst myself, Tom, and Chuck Schwartz from B R A about the timing of this project. Since we're talking about the importance of the Millen overlay project on Crestview, and traffic would be diverted through Hanley at some point, for us to be tearing up a part of, not the road of Hanley, but certainly the, a budding property, might pose a problem. And that, since we do have a forty-five day window of our bids, after which period they are not good anymore, we may wish to delay this. Tom, you may have other feelings about it, let us know how you think.
No, absolutely, if, if there is a major project on Crestview Drive, you know, there has to be a coordination to get one project done, or, or have this one postponed until that is completed.
This is why he has his job, because he's a clear thinker, and he agrees with me. I would like us to postpone this to a time after we receive the bids for Crestview, and we know how we're going to proceed then.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to postpone till after the July seventh meeting.
Yeah.
Or at the July seventh meeting, do you wanna lump it all together and?
After, I think, give us some time here.
Okay, that's the motion, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Motion carries. Okay. City administrat-, I'm gonna skip the agenda around a little bit if you'd like, but let me just point out that we even invested some money in technology upgrades for the council chambers. Okay, and so what you see here is two new flat panel displays that will display feeds or inputs that can come from a variety of sources. We have cable connection at the podium where a speaker or a member of the public, or one of our presenters can bring their laptop, can display. It will go not only here for members of the council and for the audience, but also we'll be able to take that feed and have it go directly digitally out over our cable TV broadcast, so that we have a higher quality output to them, so that they can see, for example. I'm not sure, is this going out on the cable right now, what we're showing up here, or have we not worked that out quite yet?
We, we need one more.
We need another cable, so it's just being installed, they were still working on installation today, but you'll be able to see that. So with that, city administrator communications and items for future agendas, I'm gonna let you go first.
What we put together here is something you received in your packet, that Dean asked me to put a powerpoint together just so we could revise it, and put the information that we found in the energy use audit out there to the public. This is the same as you received within your packets, it breaks down the energy use in two thousand and seven, it was put into BTUs as a common, you can do it in kilowatt-hours, the therms and the gallons for gasoline and diesel, all this to BTUs, we had a common measurement. It was broken down in three different ways, by energy source, electricity, gas, natural gas, gasoline, and diesel fuel. Broken down by department, showing each of the department uses, each of the buildings, each of the departments, and lastly, and then we also today put together, Dean put together a, we're trying to find a benchmark, so as we go forward, we know where we were for two thousand and seven, are we saving money in two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine? So we did a BTU per capita, which you did not have in your packet, we did this today, Dean put it together, so we have a benchmark. So we're right now, per capita, we're at two point six one two BTU, millions of BTUs per capita. One other item that was put together, just to give a comparison, and I will get a copy of this to you, which is up on the screen now, showing the city hall, the municipal building, and the N M C building, just so, for a concept of how much each of the buildings' energy costs currently are. We obviously don't know what their BTUs down there are, but we did find this, that's what their expenditure was. And so, this is partially done just to give everybody the opportunity of what could be done on the screen. At the department head meeting, Mike made a comment that, and Danny and I will make sure if anybody discusses presenting, to make it simple, make it clean, make it big numbers, because the busier you get, the harder it gets to read, so. Anyway, getting back to the energy use audit, this'll be the first step, I am meeting on Wednesday morning with a gentleman from Honeywell, who will be. I am meeting on Wednesday morning with the gentleman from Honeywell, who will be doing a energy out of the building, all of our buildings, whatever we come up with that needs to be done. Again, giving us a benchmark, having him come up with ideas of how we can make the buildings more efficient. Other examples were Dan Ortner came to the last meeting with the idea of the old oil burners for the, those buildings. We'll have to be looking, as we get new vehicles, miles per gallon, what type of things we can do there. Now, I believe, Lori, you were going to be the judge of need for public safety, correct? Did Public Works ever...
Yes, Pam.
Pam, okay. So, as I get this information put together, then we'll get everybody together with staff and continue on with those meetings. Anybody have any questions on this?
Yeah, can we change over to natural gas immediately? The cost per BTU is substantially the lowest of any that we have, any energy source.
It is.
I'm joking, but...
Well, that could be part of the process, and I think it's a challenge. You recall that I set out a goal of, let's figure out how to cut, establish a benchmark, and then find ten percent cut. I don't know if we can do that, but we can try. And, you know, I put that section in there on the NMC building, just because I found it interesting to look at total energy costs for each of our large buildings. We do have a history of running large buildings of that size, and our partners at this point don't. None of them are of the size that they have, any thirty-to-forty-thousand-foot buildings. City Hall's roughly, you know, three floors of more or less ten thousand square feet each, as is the nine-eleven municipal building, three floors of more or less ten thousand square feet each. And the NMC building is forty thousand square feet on three floors. It's, it's a bigger building, but it's, it was built with some pretty innovative green things for its day, but not amongst them was to be particularly energy-efficient. Those green features were in a different area, and that's a discussion point that we'll be having as we go forward and looking at that building. Thank you. Communications by any older person? Scott?
Yes, please. Last session, we passed ordinance three dash oh eight, dealing with issuance of permits for those, or non-issuance of permits for those who are delinquent in tax payments to the city who want business licenses or business permits. I would like, on the agenda, possibly not our next session, the question whether the council should authorize Catherine to investigate the same principle for those who wish conditional use permits, variances from conditional use permits, or any other city permits that are not direct sellers or direct business permits. The principle being the same thing, that we would have to commit substantial resources of staff time for someone who is not paying the bill.
Thank you. Any other older person? City attorney? I had a memo for you with recommendations for future agenda items. This comes out of two areas of the code that I've dealt with, that I found to be cumbersome or difficult. One is our large assemblies application process. You could interpret it in a variety of ways, but the way it has been interpreted was that they needed to go before a number of different committees making a presentation each time, and then each of those committees make a recommendation back to the council. I'm not certain that was the original intent, but even if it was, I think that process could be much streamlined. I think we should have a thorough staff review that involves probably a single meeting with some department heads, and have staff make their recommendations first, and then send it through the council process. And so, I've got some proposed language that I worked out with Nancy's input and for your review, and I'd like to see that on a future agenda next time, hopefully. And then, the other part was for direct sellers at approved community events or celebrations. Now, this has been in the code for quite some time, but it wasn't really applied until recently. Once we started applying it, we found out that it's just about unworkable the way it is. And so, Mayor Bro had to give special exceptions. I already had to give a special exception. I mean, good, well-meaning people who would like to follow our rules find it almost impossible to follow the rules. And so, I suggest we change the rules. And what I'm suggesting is essentially, once we approve the hot air affair, for example, or some other community event of that sort, that after that, we ought to let them tell us who will be a permitted vendor and provide us with those names. We can discuss this more, not tonight, but at a future meeting, but I'd like to see us look at this section of the code and modify it. With that, I think we've completed our entire agenda. Thanks for your patience.
Second.
Motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned.